Go found sitting council in the session, please rise to the invitation by Councilman Reeser, qualified as pledge of allegiance.
As we gather here today in the service of our community, let us take a moment to reflect on the responsibility we share. We come together not as individuals divided by background or belief, but as neighbors united by a common purpose, the well-being of our city and the people who call it home. May we approach our work with open minds, respectful dialogue, and a spirit of collaboration. Let us strive to make decisions guided by empathy, reason, and a deep commitment to justice and fairness. May we remember the choices made in this room ripple outward, shaping lives, strengthening neighborhoods, and defining the legacy we leave for future generations. Together, let us honor this opportunity to lead with integrity, wisdom, and compassion. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Will the court please call the rule?
Mr. Spring.
Here.
Mr. Ailer.
Here.
Mrs. Baker.
Here.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Here.
Mrs. Jane.
Here.
Mr. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Spring, make a motion that we suspend the reading of the minute, seconded by Mr. Ailer.
Mr. Spring.
Yes.
Mr. Ailer.
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Mrs. Jane.
Yes.
Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, we'll move to administrative reports, mayor's office, Mayor Christman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council, good evening, guests. This week I've been invited to speak to Rotary on Monday, but tomorrow to issue a proclamation on the Week of the Child and Head Start Day, and then one on Friday, which is something we all need to be aware of, sexual abuse awareness. County Commissioners and I will go together to issue that proclamation, and it's at a time, just to bring it to light, there's a lot of it going on in our community and in this county and the country, and we need to report it when we find it. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Christman. Any questions or comments for Mr. Christman? Seeing none, we'll move to Service Safety Director, Mr. Dott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council, good evening, guests. I just want to use my time this evening to kind of reflect on the events of the last few days and some of the water issues that we've unfortunately had. Again, obviously, we had some extremely heavy rains at the end of last week, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and we had multiple instances of flooding in some neighborhoods, especially in the Maris Park, Raymond Avenue area, Whispering Pines, especially around white pines and red pines, and then along Michigan Street in the Lake Heights Division. So I just want to kind of address those kind of independently to give council understanding of what we think happened and what we're planning to do about it, and also for the residents that were impacted by it. So the Raymond Avenue and white pines and red pines are all kind of tied together in the same general drainage system. The city owns two detention ponds that are near the intersection of red pines and white pines. Our preliminary evaluation, again, we haven't been able to do it all because the water's not all receded from those ponds yet, but it does look like that we had some outlets in those ponds that got plugged that didn't allow the water to get away from those ponds, so those ponds flooded out of their banks, and that's what apparently has flooded the street in Raymond, because that water didn't recede on its own after that was unclogged. Probably the worst flooding we have is at red pines and white pines, and in addition to the pond being, having the outlet clogged, it looks like the catch basins on the street were also clogged with debris. So we need to go out and get those cleaned off. I know there were also residents out there working to clean those off. You know, when we get heavy rain events like that, you're going to get debris that comes down. It's got to be a team effort between, certainly, the city's got to do a better job of maintaining our infrastructure, the ponds, and we do have crews that go out and check the catch basins as much as they can, but we've got finite resources for multiple, probably thousands of catch basins throughout the city, so it's nearly impossible to get to every one of them immediately before event, in advance. So we would just ask residents that, no, you might have a catch basin out near the front of your house, I know I've got one out in front of my house, just period up and check on it, make sure, just take a rake and rake the debris back from over it. Again, that should help some, but we've also got a responsibility to do a better job of taking care of some of our stuff as well, which we are working on an informalized plan to provide maintenance on some of those areas that have shown up as trouble spots. So we think we've got a pretty good handle on what happened in red pines and white pines and Raymond Avenue there, and a plan to mitigate that so it doesn't happen again in the future. Along Michigan Avenue, obviously, that's been an ongoing problem for several years dating back to 2019. Obviously, we had some significant flooding there that resulted in a block wall being built in the backyards there to help mitigate that flooding. My understanding is this is the first time that the water has actually gotten up against that wall since it was installed six years ago. Unfortunately, and it's apparent from our observations, that it did not keep the water out of backyards. I didn't hear of getting any houses on Michigan, which I'm thankful for that, but obviously, you still don't want standing water in your backyard. So we've got to take a look at that and figure out why that is continuing to happen and what we can do to address it. So while I can't sit here today and tell you that we've got, we know what the answer is and what the plan is, but I can definitively say that we've already started to look at additional measures to protect homes and property, and that includes some redundant countermeasures. It could include things like increasing the storage capacity of those ponds, not only for the new builds that are happening, but also to handle the existing water that's coming, and also perhaps changing those pond outlets and installing some larger pumps there. So those are all options on the table. Again, don't know exactly what that's going to be, and it could be a combination of all those. So but please know that the city is working to address the issues to hopefully mitigate these things in the future. So we've heard from many residents that were affected, we appreciate that. Getting that information is valuable, especially when we get it in a timely manner so we can get out and see what's going on, because sometimes when it goes away quickly, it's hard to go back and say, well, what actually happened here, when we couldn't see where the water was actually at. So please, please, always if you've got a problem, feel free to call the city, don't assume somebody else has done it, because we want to get out and take a look at it when that happens. So and the last thing I would just ask, and probably the toughest thing to ask, is just to have patience with us while we continue to try and work through the problem. I know it's frustrating. I mean, I'm a homeowner as well, there's nothing more frustrating than having a water problem that you feel helpless to fix, and I get it, I really empathize with you, but what I can say is you've got administrations and council promise that we'll do the best we can to continue to try and prepare for these events and mitigate it in the future. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but just know that we are working on it actively.
Thank you, Mr. Dott. Any questions or comments for Mr. Dott? Seeing none, we'll move to Law Director, Mr. Staley.
Good evening, council. Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, I would like to request that the Rules Committee consider the topic of publication of our ordinances and resolutions and notices. Our Vice Code, Section 73121, allows the city to publish any notices on our website and social media accounts. We've historically used the examiner as our publication outlet, but given the number of hearings, committee meetings that we're having, which is good, we hear a lot of feedback from the public, well, we didn't know about it. Well, that's because, I think, a majority of our electorate do not utilize the examiner as their main source of information. And so I think it would be potentially a good use of city resources, but more importantly, a better way to have out there for the public a continual rolling public notices portion on our website and social media. So that's not my call, but I will work with the council and Bonnie as our clerk to make that happen if the Rules Committee seems so fit. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. Staley. We will send that to Rules Committee, Mr. James, for your consideration. Yes, question?
Would you have a meeting on Thursday? We've not had to do it on Thursday.
Yeah, perfect. And I'll get you a copy of the list of the land.
Okay, thanks.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Staley? Seeing none, I do not see Mr. Brentlinger for an audit report, I do not see the police chief or representative of the police department, or the fire chief or representative of the fire department. So we'll move to Engineers Office with Mr. Bischof.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your agenda tonight, just put all the ordinances for first reading on our capital projects with the city, which were included in the permanent budget that you guys passed. One note on the resurfacing and kind of finalizing that list, as soon as we get that narrow down to the actual streets we're going to resurface, I'll share that with the council members today. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Bischof. Any comments or questions for Mr. Bischof? Seeing none, we'll move to...
Chief Wilson, any report?
Evening, everybody. Sorry for my tardiness. It's been one of those evenings. I guess just a quick update from where we're at. Two steps forwards, one step back, we got, excuse me, my brother just ran up steps. So our last, we just had one of our firefighters graduate from, sorry, from paramedic school, so he now will be able to serve as a fully trained firefighter or paramedic. We have one who will be graduating med school April, or I'm sorry, May the 10th, so we're getting close there. However, we did have one put in his resignation, so his last day will be April the 28th. So we'll be losing one paramedic there. So again, two steps forward, one step back, better than one forward and two back, but that's where we're at. So I think April the 17th, if I'm correct, that will be the next Civil Service Commission meeting. So hopefully during that meeting, we'll be able to set up a date and time for some interviews and get our eligibility list established. But right now, we don't have anybody to choose from, so hopefully we can get that done so we can get this vacancy filled. That's all I got.
Thank you. Any compliments or questions for the chief?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, appreciate it.
Downtown Director, Ms. Stotler.
Good evening, everyone. We are kicking off the April season with a lot of events, so super excited. This Saturday, April 12th, from 11:00 to 4:00 p.m. will be our Easter extravaganza. We are closing West Columbus from the light by Main Street to the alleyway, keeping the alleyway open, Main Street open, everything like that. That will be closed from 10:00 to about 4:30 p.m. that day, so that will be the Monroe closure. I'm hoping for some nice weather and having a great day for that. And then another event we are having this year is April 17th. It is a Thursday night, it's called Extravaganza After Dark, that runs from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. No street closures for that one. And then I just want to bring to attention to everyone and to the community, on April 22nd, we are partnering with City of Bell Fountain, Small Nation, to have a spring downtown cleaning day, so that will be from 10:00 to 1:00. We are still accepting people to register for that, so feel free to come volunteer, you'll get free meal and a free shirt and help us clean up the downtown for the spring. So that ends my report.
Thank you, Ms. Stotler. Any questions or comments for Mrs. Stotler? Thank you. Economic Development, Mr. Valrath.
Thank you, Mr. President. Evening, council, administration. Just had one main thing to share with you. You all have seen tariffs going into place, and just want you to be aware that that is real impact for our community. We are very fortunate that Honda is one of the most American-made vehicles now. Recent reports came out showing that there are about 500 vehicles that are made in the U.S., and 88 of those have more than 50% of their parts, all their components being made in the U.S. or Canada. Of those 88, 43 are Hondas and Acuras. That's a really high number. GM obviously is known as an American production. There were only two vehicles that they had that were approaching the 50%. So Honda is in a very good position, which is good for our community. If you were to look at the top 20 of those 88, the top 20 vehicles that have the most U.S. production, Kia had number one, and the rest were all Honda and Tesla. So again, just a really strong point for our market. However, there, as I said, there are a lot of impacts. We have a lot of our car parts that are still being imported from Mexico, a lot coming from Japan, so just trying to keep a close eye on that. There aren't really solutions, it's more just, hey, this is where we are, and hopefully in the long run, that shakes out to be a really positive for the area. It's not just manufacturing, though. I think this is a really important time for us as a community to realize that we do have a lot of our local businesses, that their inventory comes from all over the world, it's a global marketplace. So now is a really good time for us to even be leaning more into our downtowns and our small retailers, just to show support for them as their costs are going up. If they have not secured inventory right away, they may be looking at some pretty significant cost increases. So great time for us just to remember our guests that come into our community and shop, but we also need to do that to support the local league so that we're helping through kind of a unique period of time that we have. So that's the Chamber Economic Development app, support your local again in this recently good time. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Valrath, any comments or questions for Mr. Valrath? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Meyer, just saw you poke in there at the end. Do you have any report from the Parks Department?
Sure.
Okay.
Quickly. All right. We just wrapped our board meeting in the basement, so thank you. Just want to share, we've got a lot of irons in the fire, several projects that are just moving forward, and so you'll see some action at Oakland Square this summer. Harmon Park, we're redoing pickleball at Rutan, that'll hopefully be happening here end of May, beginning of June. So just a lot of cool stuff happening. Restrooms are getting reworked as well at Ratliff and Rutan, so we're taking tax dollars and getting done what was on the list from the master plan. So just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Any comments or questions for Mr. Meyer while we got him? Thank you. Appreciate it. That concludes the administrative reports. We'll now move to reports from standing committees. Finance Committee, Mr. Spring.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have six ordinances and one resolution tonight. Ordinance 2515 is going to be the Harding Street project. It's going to be paid for on a water construction, and it's right around 360,000. Ordinance 2516 is a project on Malone Avenue, will also be paid out of the water construction fund for a cost around 215,000. 2517 is going to be our street painting and striping, that'll be out of the traffic department and paint materials for a cost of around 90,000. 2518 is stormwater improvements, and it's going to be on Powell and Columbus Avenue for a cost around 170. And then 2519 is our annual street resurfacing. We're looking at about a $700,000 project, 600 of it is going to come out of our reconstruction and improvement fund, and 100,000 of that will be coming from the street department. 20, oh, sorry, 2520 is a resolution, and that is allowing the police chief to apply for the cameras that he had talked about at the last meeting. And then 2521 is a supplemental appropriation, and we're going to be asking for first and final on that, and that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Springs. Rules Committee, Mr. James.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do not have anything on the agenda tonight for the first time in quite a while. We do have a Rules Committee meeting on April 10th here in Council Chambers at 1:30, that's regarding further consideration on principal use solar zoning regulations, as well as the issue Mr. Staley just mentioned about public notices and anything else that comes before the committee, that ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. James. Safety Committee, Mr. Reeser.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have one resolution authorizing the chief of police to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the county sheriff's office and join in participation in the service of designated warrants and investigations, and that'll be for adoption this evening. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. Reeser. Utilities Committee, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Streets Committee, Mr. Ailer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We have one ordinance for second reading only. 2514 ordinance indicating certain east-west public alley between lots 1584 on the north and lot 1585 on the south in the City of Bell Fountain Township.
Thank you, Mr. Ailer. Sidewalks, curbs, and Parks Committee, Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Fitzpatrick. And Audit Committee, Mrs. Baker.
I have no report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Baker. That concludes the reports of standing committees. We'll now move to a portion of our meeting where we welcome communications from citizens. If there are any citizens in the audience who seek to address council, please approach the lectern, state your name and address, after which the chair will recommend you to skip for up to five minutes.
Sarah Lewis, 766 East Columbus Avenue, here in Bell Fountain. I actually wasn't anticipating coming up here to the lectern this evening, but when I want to live out my life prophecies of giving out positive affirmations, when positive affirmations are due, I wanted to definitely recognize the mayor in his recognition today of Sexual Assault Awareness Month. It's such an important recognition as a member of this community, as a mayor of this community. The sexual assault survivors are genderless, they are ageless, and they impact so many families in this area. I think that's such an important piece that you did that today. I also wanted to call out Mr. Valrath today. I appreciated the mention of small businesses there in the area and understanding the impact that the tariffs have, because that is something, as a coffee shop owner, I don't know how many of you know me, Mackenzie, I don't know if you're familiar with who I am. You know, coffee is 100% imported into this country, and that is not something that I can keep an inventory, that is something that I have to order weekly, and the costs of goods are rising, and it's so important to support local. Keeping up with the theme of supporting local, I'm going to be partnering with, it's Sexual Assault Awareness Month, I'm going to be partnering with Medusa Fit, it's a local clothing brand here, and we are going to be having a refresher available to the general public on April 23rd, and 100% of those drinks sold are going to victims of sexual assault and those survivors. So I would love to see the community members here, the council members, come out and support individuals, and that goes to our local organization, TCA. Again, 100% of that is going, we're not keeping any of that. So I would love to see you guys come out and support that. And again, thank you so much to the 200 individuals that I called out today for making mention of positive affirmations and energy. Thank you so much.
Good evening. Tim Steinheifer, 216 East Patterson Avenue, which is in Ward 1. Here to give you an update, many of you know that I've been circulating some petitions here, and what people are telling me about this is that what you guys did on the cannabis ban is a total disgrace. It's a disaster. In 2023, the people of Bell Fountain voted to legalize adult-use cannabis. 56% said yes. It passed in every single ward, and let me tell you, that doesn't happen very often. That's not just a win, it's a blowout. And you know what this council did? They ignored it. They completely ignored the will of the people. Five council members, all Republicans, by the way, voted to ban dispensaries anyway. This was terrible, it was weak. Quite frankly, it's what everybody hates about politics. And you know what's even worse? They tried to pass it as an emergency measure. Emergency, you know, like when an ice storm's coming or a train falls off the tracks, or we have a flood.
Mr. Staley, that's not true. It wasn't passed as an emergency measure. It was passed without that language.
I'm getting to that because it didn't work. Well, I have it right here, Mr. Wagner, and I hope this doesn't detract from my time, but we've attached the ordinance to each and every petition, and you guys tried to pass it as an emergency.
No, it was not passed as an emergency.
I would explain what an emergency measure is.
Well, you're entitled, you're not entitled to your own facts. It wasn't passed as an emergency. We're not going to review this.
And neither are you, but we're going to give you a second chance, and I'll get to that. Now, an emergency, you know, like a tornado's coming or something, but it means something different for city council. See, here in Ohio, we have the right to the initiative and the right to the referendum, which lets the people sit in the position of city council and have the final say. That's what they tried to do, it did not work. But because over the last four weeks, the people of Bell Fountain have been standing up and collecting over 363 signatures to put this on the ballot so that the voters have the final say. And I'll tell you what, we're just getting started. The people are fired up, they're tired of being ignored. Now, let's talk about what this ban actually does, because it doesn't stop anybody from smoking pot, it doesn't stop them from buying it, it's going to drive up to Wapakoneta or down to Springfield or over to Dublin and buy it. All this ban does is send that tax revenue elsewhere. We lose the revenue. No money for sidewalks, no money for the parking disaster we have here downtown, no money for public safety. It's a total joke. So why do it? I'm going to teach you about another term, it's called virtue signaling. That's when politicians pretend to care about something, they make a bunch of drama, and they don't fix anything, they don't actually fix anything. It's all about looking good, not doing good. It's phony, it's weak, it's what politicians do, but they have nothing else. But the people, they're seeing through it. We're not stupid. This isn't just about cannabis, it's about respecting the voters. This is about whether the people still run this town rather than a handful of politicians who think they know better. So here's the deal, people. I have the petition right here. See, it's on a great big piece of paper. You know, when I was growing up, they called it legal size. How long has it been since anyone's heard that term? Legal size. It's an interesting word. You know, I drafted thousands, probably tens of thousands of legal documents, and they're just on a normal-sized piece of paper, you know? You put it in your printer, beep beep, boop boop. And, but some things are so important that it has to go on a big piece of paper like this, and giving the voters the final say, that's one of those things. So I have this here tonight, I would invite each and every one of you who voted for this, and even those who didn't, we love Mackenzie, thank you, Mackenzie, to do this, it's the last chance. We intend on turning this in tomorrow, so we have plenty of time. I'll be here, I look forward to meeting you and discussing this after the meeting. You can sign the petition, or you better start explaining yourselves, because come November, the people are going to remember. They're going to vote, and they're going to take this town back. Thank you.
My name is Earl Palmer, I live at 1612 White Pines Drive. I just wanted to say, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Just, Mr. Dott, you mentioned the white pines, red pines area there. I have a video from 2019. If you're aware, the reason that floods so much is because everything that comes down 179, all the water, so it goes from north to south on 179, and for some reason, it takes a right turn and comes down white pines. So I would love to show you a video if you have time, just let you know what I'm talking about, because when it comes down, my son's car was out in the road, and the water was almost going up over the hood. So it just feeds all the way down, it doesn't, I don't know why it doesn't go down, I don't know if it's just not drains or what, but if we could get that rerouted, I think all your flooding in that area there goes away. So I would just love to show you that if you have time after the meeting or whatever, and you could see what I'm talking about.
Sure, we're going to be happy to look at it with you.
Sure, thank you. And appreciate all you guys voting against that, keeps our town safe and keeps the riffraff out. Appreciate it.
I'm not sure if this belongs here or not, but my name's Dave Hill, I live at 1012 Dorothy Lane, and I'm just here about the speed on Ludlow. There's a sign that's right there, it's corporation limit, and on one side, when you're coming in, it's 35, and then on the way out, it's 55. So I don't, like I said, I don't know whether this is for this body or not, but I think that speed limit is too high for that stretch of road between that, where the school is and that new housing development that's going up right there on the left as you're going out of town to Gun Town. So I mean, that's, that stretch of road there should not be 55 mile an hour.
Are you talking about past the corporation limit?
Yes.
Okay.
So I didn't know whether the Safety Service Director can look into that, or whether or not it needs to go to the county or...
I don't know the answer to that. I would ask Wes to take a look. I would ask Wes to take a look at it.
Yeah, we share maintenance with the county, so City Engineer and I can have a discussion about it, and I'm not sure, I think there's some traffic studies that are probably planned as of that development, so speed will be a consideration there.
Okay. Because I know it used to be, it used to be a lot less. I think there was a 45, I think it was a 45. And now for all of a sudden, there was 55 on our sign for that. What's that? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for voting that, too, on that other stuff.
Now I got to talk. Soon here, three-seven-four-three Logan Road.
I'm sorry, give me that address again, too. I know you've spoken at many, I'm just trying to write all this stuff down. Three-seventy-four-three?
Yes, three-seven-four-three.
Logan Road?
Logan Road.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Just a quick add-on here about the ban with the dispensaries. I've been helping collect signatures on those petitions. The stories I am hearing, it would break your heart, seriously. Elderly people struggle to get to our points where we're collecting signatures just to let us know how grateful they would be to have a dispensary here close so they could quit driving two hours to get the gummies or whatever it is they need. It has helped their pain so much. People that have gotten off of pain medication, using the gummies instead, it's really benefited them in their pain. They can get around easier. They are just, their life is just so much better because of it. I've heard stories about people that have been alcoholics, and due to being able to use THC instead of alcohol, they were able to kick that nasty habit. And I know I've given you the statistics on how much worse alcohol is than what the marijuana is, and those are all facts. But I mean, I really wish you could just hear these people as they talk to us about signing the petition and how they would just so much love to be able to get mostly gummies is what I'm hearing, but they're driving two hours to get this stuff, they're still going to drive two hours to get it. We're losing out on that money. I don't use any of it. I don't smoke any of it. I don't have a dog in that fight, but I don't think we should be losing those tax dollars. And I think if it's going to be a benefit to even a portion of the people that live here, the citizens that live here, why wouldn't we consider it? I can't think of anything alcohol is cured, but yet marijuana does have numerous no benefits to it. So just wanted to throw that in there since we had other comments too, so thank you.
You state your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bernie Island, thousand-and-nine Park Street, here in Bell Fountain, and I wanted to address the issue of the marijuana dispensaries, too. Daily marijuana use in the United States has doubled between 2011 and 2021 from six percent to 11%. And people ask, will the 2023 legalization of recreational marijuana and opening dispensaries increase use in Ohio? And the answer is obviously yes, because marijuana is mammoth. Forbes reports that it's a $20 billion industry. So there's a great incentive to make sure that the public doesn't hear any bad news, but still, the science tells us that there's serious and substantial risks. Will legalization and opening of dispensaries increase those risks? Yeah, dramatically. An increase in users has put pressure on government, such as ours, to loosen restriction and make obtaining marijuana convenient, and that's why Bell Fountain faces the specter of certain irresponsible opinion leaders attempting to circumvent the nearly unanimous determination of our City Council by applying direct pressure in the form of a referendum to force the city to bend to its wishes. Now, of course, they'll say that that's democratic. Churchill once commented, "The best argument against democracy is a five-minute conversation with the average voter." I would add that even a better argument would be a five-minute conversation with a pot smoker. And this is because when it comes to the risks of their habit, they either don't know them, don't want to know them, ignore them, or don't care. They want what they want, and they are sure that they smoke a miracle drug that relieves pain, improves mood, lessens anxiety with no side effects, either for themselves or for others. And so they organize referendums, such as the one that passed in late 2023 here in Ohio. Now, my point is not that we should abandon referendums or that democracy is not beneficial. My point is that democracy is not a god. A majority voting for a bad thing does not make that thing beneficial, moral, or good. Indeed, democracy can often get it wrong, and that's, in my opinion, what democracy did with the Issue Two referendum. It got it wrong. Now, to its credit, democracy got it right in Logan County, because our county voted against Issue Two, our county. Luckily, the Iowa Vice Code gives municipalities the right to opt out of this malignant and yes, immoral trade by denying sales within its borders. TAC, the destructive chemical in marijuana, is getting more dangerous, and the concentrations have increased from 3% when I was in high school to over 70% today. And as the drug gets stronger, so do its negative effects. The 2021 study by the National Institute of Drug Abuse found that 16 million people were addicted. That's nearly one-third of all users who can't quit, at least not without help. And this help drains billions of dollars in resources from charities, employers, households, and government. These are resources that could be better used elsewhere, and these drained resources, in my estimates, more than overwhelm the tax dollars that a marijuana dispensary would generate, as if it's really about money, but it's not. If this were about money, we could legalize any number of vices and tax them, but this issue is about our citizens, our society, our children, it's about lives. A 2023 JAMA study found that marijuana addicts were twice as likely as non-users to experience clinical depression and four times as likely to develop bipolar disorders. But of course, many people have tried marijuana and no addiction, no lasting effects. People, no doubt, in this room have used marijuana to help dull the pain of personal trauma, to escape it, even published their success stories on Facebook posts or pseudo endorsements of the product, but one day, their sons or daughters will read those stories, and they'll discover the weed hoard, and in much the same way children often react when they find their parents stash of pornography, they'll sample it, and they will come, many of them, to the conclusion that being legal, and there's a dispensary down the street, it's an okay thing to do, and some of them will have their lives ruined.
Mr. Ivan, you're beyond five minutes. You're beyond five minutes.
Okay.
Your time's expired.
Okay. In succession, the pot speakers here...
Mr. Ivan, I'm sorry. Your time's expired.
Okay. I'm sorry, too. I do want to say thank you for the City Council, for their vote. Regardless of what does happen, I do really thank you very much for what you did. You took a principled stand, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
My name's Matt Bogan. Live at sixteen-oh-five Raymond Avenue, here in Bell Fountain. Mr. Dots?
I'm sorry. Mr. Was it Bogan?
Bogan. B-O-G-A-N. Okay, thank you. Yep. So I heard about, the gentleman has a video. I'd like to show you my videos as well. So my house is at the bottom of the bowl, and it came within, the water came within about three inches of being in my living room, and yeah, that wasn't, that was not a great experience. So if we can find solutions, maybe another way, so like if there is a clog, I don't want to be swimming if there's just a clog. So I don't know, a channel, an outlet, some other way to get some water down away from the homes, maybe, but if you wouldn't mind afterwards, I'd like to show you those pictures and video. Thank you.
Any other member of the audience seek to address council? Seeing none, that will conclude the communications from citizens portion of our meeting. We'll now move to our legislative agenda with ordinances and resolutions for first reading.
And ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to seek proposals and/or advertise for bids and enter into contract for the Harding Street Waterline Improvements Project 2024-04W and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Springs. Motion to pass on first reading only, seconded by Mrs. Baker.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reiser?
Yes.
And ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into contract with the Malone Avenue Waterline Improvements Project 2024-03W and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Springs. Motion to pass on first reading only, seconded by Mrs. Baker.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reiser?
Yes.
And ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into contract with the 2025 Street Painting and Striking Project Number 2025-2R and declaring an emergency in the city of Bell Fountain, Ohio.
Mr. Springs. Motion to pass on first reading only, seconded by Mrs. Baker.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reiser?
Yes.
And ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to seek proposals and/or advertise for bids and enter into contract with a selected contractor and/or bidders for the Columbus Avenue and Powell Avenue Storm Improvement Project Number 2025-2ST and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Springs. Motion to pass on first reading, seconded by Mr. Ailer.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reiser?
Yes.
And resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a lease with Motorola Solutions Incorporated regarding police radios.
Mr. Springs. Motion to adopt, seconded by Mr. Reiser.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yep.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reiser?
Yes.
And resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a lease with Motorola Solutions Incorporated regarding police radios.
Mr. Springs. Motion to adopt, seconded by Mr. Reiser.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reiser?
Yes.
And ordinance making supplemental appropriations and amending the permanent appropriations ordinance for purposes of municipal court, police, ESID, and parks, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Springs. Motion to waive the three-reading rule, seconded by Mr. Ailer.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reiser?
Yes.
Mr. Springs. Motion to pass on first and final, seconded by Mrs. Baker.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reiser?
Yes.
The resolution authorizing the Chief of Police to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Logan County Sheriff's Office regarding participation in the service of designated warrants and investigations leading to the apprehension of fugitives in the community.
Mr. Reiser?
Motion to adopt.
Seconded by Mr. Ailer.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reiser?
Yes.
That concludes our ordinances and resolutions for first reading. We'll now move to ordinances for second reading.
And ordinance vacating that certain east-west public alley between lot 1584 on the north and lot 1585 on the south in the city of Bell Fountain, Lake Township, Logan County, Ohio.
Mr. Ailer?
Motion to adopt.
This is an ordinance for second reading.
Or wait, second reading. Pass on second reading.
Okay, let's start over. Chair recognizes Mr. Ailer for purposes of a motion.
Motion to pass on second reading.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Reiser.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reiser?
Yes.
That concludes our ordinances for second reading. There are no ordinances for third reading, so that concludes our legislative agenda. Are there any communications from the court?
Yes, I received a new liquor license request from Vicarious Pizza, the new opening. If there's no objections, this will be mailed, and donate blood for the city of Bell Fountain Thursday, May eighth, 2025, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. here at the city building. I don't know, is it up here, down there?